You're nice and clear, I can hear you. Great.
Okay, it's 7:00 PM. So we get started, are we live?
Yes, we're live.
All right, we'll take it live.
All right. Good evening everyone, and welcome to the June 3 Capitol Planning Commission meeting. In accordance with the Santa Cruz County Health Order, this meeting is not physically open to the public, but commissioners and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there's several ways that the public can participate. So if we could have the screen up, or you can call in by phone, enter the webinar ID number, you can dial nine and raise your hand and wait to be unmuted. You can also do it via email and write to us, and there's many ways that you can participate in the public comments. So with that, we'll begin the meeting with the roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Christensen?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Wilk?
Here.
Chair Ruth?
Here.
Thank you.
Now if everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, and to one nation, under God, liberty indivisible, with liberty in us. Okay, our first item on the agenda tonight is oral communications. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, Katie?
There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. I don't, Matt, can you verify, have we received any additional public comment, or Sean?
I don't believe we have received any public comments. I have not received any comments.
Okay then, we'll move on to public comments. This is a time when members of the public can address any issue that's not on the agenda tonight, any concerns you have in the city, or whatever you want to address us about. So we'll give a few seconds here for anyone to weigh in if they have any comments to make. Not seeing any hands raised.
I'm checking the...
Okay, we'll move on then. Commission comments. Any commissioners have any comments at this time? Harry, none? We'll move to staff comments. Katie, any comments?
Yeah, I have just a couple comments for you. The Coastal Commission is scheduled to certify our zoning code on June 10th, so we do have a couple applications which are on hold right now because new applicants want to utilize some of the new regulations within the new code, and so June 10th is the day it's supposed to be certified, so next week. So that's exciting. And then, the second update I had for you was just a response to a question that came up at our last meeting regarding generators, and whether or not the city has any standards for generators. And basically, generators would have to comply with setback standards because they would be a permanent structure in the side yard or rear yard, could not be in the front yard. And it all depends on the width of the lot, what the setback would be. And then also for noise, we have a different section of code that's not the zoning code, but Section 9.12.010 regarding noise. And basically, it says any irritating noises should not be made by a person or firm or corporation between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM within 200 feet of a residence any day. So, and then also our decibel limits are outlined in our general plan. So I wanted to bring this up and ask the Planning Commission if they're interested in adding regulations regarding generators to our zoning code, and if so, we can put that, either we can put it on a future hearing soon, or we could table it for when we do our next zoning code updates.
Okay, thank you Katie. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Well, I think I'm the one who brought it up, as is Commissioner Westman, and as far as I'm concerned, you answered my question, and we could look at it when you do the next zoning code update.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you Susan. Was someone about to make a comment? Very none. I did fail to mention that you can watch the meeting tonight on the city's website, and our technician tonight is Kingston Rivera. Thank you Kingston for doing that. Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar. The first item tonight on our consent calendar is 723 El Salta Drive, which is a fence along the block primarily for people's safety. Any comments or questions on this, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fence.
I will second it. This is Commissioner Newman.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Westman, seconded by Commissioner Newman. We have the roll call, please Edna.
Yes, Commissioner Christensen?
Hi.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilk?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes, so the item carries unanimously, and that takes us to public hearings. We just have one public hearing tonight, and this is at 1650 41st Avenue, the Chevron Station on the corner of 41st and Capitol Road. They are requesting a conditional use permit to allow retail sales of not just beer and wine, but to include distilled spirits for off-site consumption. So, we have a staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. Chair Ruth, tonight before you as mentioned, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit amendment for the sale of distilled spirits for Chevron, a gas station located at 1650 41st Avenue. 1650 41st Avenue is located on the southwest corner, southeast corner, excuse me, of the 41st Avenue and Capitol Road intersection adjacent to the Wind and Sea Commercial Center. The 31,000 square foot lot is in the center of Capitol's main commercial corridor, and 2004, the Planning Commission approved a conditional permit amendment to reconstruct the gas station and mini mart that you see today. The CUP maintained the existing use for retail sale of beer and wine, approved by the Planning Commission originally in 1988. The applicant is proposing the addition of hard alcohol sales, which requires an amendment to the CUP. This is the existing and proposed site plan. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the exterior layout, the size of the mini store, or the exterior appearance. The previously approved CUP allows for 24-hour operations for both the gas station and mini mart. Currently, the store operates from 6:00 AM until midnight. Should the mini mart extend their operating hours, they would still be limited by their ABC license not to sell alcohol later than 2:00 AM. Condition number four includes the previously approved language regarding hours of operation. The business currently possesses a type 20 off-sale beer and wine license from the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, or ABC. With Planning Commission approval of the CUP amendment, the applicant could obtain a type 21 off-sale general license in lieu of their existing license. As highlighted in blue, the applicant is proposing to keep distilled spirits behind the cashier station and out of customer reach. The proposed plans are consistent with the requirements of a type 21 license from the ABC. Sorry. Chief of Police Terry McManus reviewed the application, conducted a site visit, and made findings that support the approval of the CUP amendment. Chief McManus provided a letter of necessity and convenience for the project, which is an ABC requirement, with the understanding that the Planning Commission would prohibit the sale of hard alcohol mini bottles, which have proven to create a nuisance-type activity and present problems to communities and law enforcement. Staff discussed these concerns with the applicant who accepted the proposed limitation, which was added as condition of approval number five. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the project based on the conditions of approval and findings.
Hey, thank you Matt. Before we open it to the public, are there any questions for staff from the commission?
I had a question, Commissioner Newman. So, and this might be better directed to the applicant if they are here, but this kind of caught me by surprise because I've never seen a convenience store and a gas station selling full alcohol. And I looked at the Chevron extra mile store project description, and it says there are 297 extra mile stores in California, and approximately 123 of those stores sell beer and wine. So I was curious as to, are we breaking new ground here? I'm not saying we shouldn't, but it's just, it's new to me to see full alcoholic beverage sales in a gas station.
Commissioner Newman, if I could respond a little bit. If my memory serves me correct, it was years ago, it was always the policy of the city not to allow hard liquor to be sold at these kinds of locations.
I'm thinking statewide even. Maybe he can, maybe this is the trend, I don't know, but I've never seen it.
I believe Sean did some research on this, since Planner Sisanto, and discovered that the 76 station up by the 41st and Highway 1 intersection there also has a license that allows them to serve hard alcohol as well, so it seems that the precedent has been set.
That's correct. This is Planner Sisanto here. I did do some looking into this when the application came in, and we did discover that the 76 station currently possesses a type 21 license, which is the license that would be applied for if you approve this project.
When was that granted, Sean?
I'm not sure if I have that information.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff? Harry, none, then we'll open the public portion. So for members of the public, this is your time to respond to this. time to respond to this. Once again, if we could have the screen that shows how to respond to, to the particular item on the agenda. So we'll wait a few minutes and see if anybody has any comments to make.
It, it appears Andrew Volmer is, is available to speak, or has his hand raised to speak. Sean, I cannot open up...
I can enable him to talk.
Can you adjust that for us?
Yeah. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Edna.
Yes, I'm sorry. I actually have a request for the previous topic to see the fence layout, not on this topic. You don't have to go back to it now, but I'd like to see what is the fence that was approved at 723 El Salto.
Okay, it's a, it's a, a metal fence with, with parallel metal posts, a little over, I believe it's a little over four feet tall, and it will run for that area behind the home along the bluff.
Okay, it's on the bluff side of the property, not on El Salto's side? Okay.
No, on the bluff side.
Okay, thank you.
Replace an existing deteriorated fence.
Okay, thank you. I live at 710 El Salto, so I was just curious. All right, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to our public hearing. Are there any people on there, Matt or Susan, that would like to comment?
I actually do see the applicant has their hand raised.
Okay. Is that Mr. Rawlings?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rawlings, go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings, and I am a consultant to the Chevron Corporation. I wanted to just make a couple of comments here, and obviously make myself available for any questions. There are some other representatives from Chevron Corporation on the line as well, and they're available, obviously, for questions as well. First of all, we do concur with the staff recommendation and the findings, and we do, for the record, agree to all of the conditions of approval as presented to you this evening. A couple of points that I, I'd like, just a couple things I'd like to highlight is, number one, this is actually a Chevron corporate-owned store, and obviously, we all know that Chevron's one of the largest corporations in the world, and they have quite a few policies and procedures in place. They spend a lot of money on training their employees. They are very compliance-oriented, just due to the nature of their business in general. So they've proven to be a really good operator. They maintain very good stores. Their employees are very well-trained, and so that we have not, in any of the locations that we do sell any kind of alcohol, we've not been a public safety or nuisance issue because, you know, Chevron takes their business extremely seriously and spends a lot of money on the training and policies and procedures implementation. In terms of just overall market, and this is, this goes to the addressing of distilled spirits at, at gas stations, I, there is a, there is a trend to more smaller format markets to be able to offer a much more complete line. A lot of it is mostly driven by customer demand. Customers are, you know, are, are always looking for some type of convenience in terms of being able to, you know, buy products in, in one location. Many folks appreciate the fact that they can go into a smaller format market, make their purchases very, very quickly, whereas if you go into a traditional grocery store, you're there a lot longer, and this is, request is really being driven to add convenience to our existing customers. Also, part of the trend with distilled spirits is also some of the pre-made products that are available now, and, and those have gained in a lot of popularity. We don't dedicate a tremendous amount of space to the display. We put it in the back, and again, it's, the emphasis is that it's just for some convenience to some of those customers that are looking to make that, that particular purchase. So, you know, with that, we were obviously happy to know that the police chief didn't see any, any big issues with this. We, we've never inventoried any type of like mini, you know, the airline-sized bottles. That's certainly not in our business model at all. There are other Chevron locations that do sell distilled spirits, so in our project narrative, you know, we, we probably should have changed the wording to alcohol, but we do have quite a number of stores that are in the business of selling some type of alcoholic beverage, and so we share that to demonstrate that we think we've been a really good corporate citizen in all of our locations, and we don't believe it will be a problem here in Capitola. So anyway, with that, you know, thank you for your time and your consideration on this, and, you know, we're obviously more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rawlings. Are there any questions for Mr. Rawlings from the commission? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rawlings. If we have any questions, we'll, we'll let you know. Okay, so let's bring it back. Any, any further questions for the staff at this time before we open it to the public hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing, and, well, I think we, maybe we've already done that. We'll open, open it now and wait a few minutes for any public comments.
Commissioners, I have a follow-up on that question that was asked about the permitting for the other license. I do see that the type 21 was issued in 2001 by the, by the ABC. I don't have a Capitola approval date, and it could have been sometime earlier because that, that 2001 date is based on the last time a license was issued. It could have been earlier, depending on changes in ownership, but...
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
No problem.
Are we getting any members of the public wanting to speak on this item?
I, I don't see any emails, and there are no, no one is requesting to speak on Zoom.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who would like to lead off?
I'm prepared to move approval.
Okay, Mr. Newman, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
With the conditions as specified.
Okay. Commissioner Christensen, I believe gave the second. Is that correct?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, if there's no further discussion, maybe the roll call, please, Edna?
No, 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 excuse me. Can we have a discussion on this issue?
Okay, Mr. Wilk, go ahead.
So, I don't really object to this. I just wanted to point out that I did raise the question about the mini bottles, and just out of curiosity why that those are a problem. And I actually talked to a manager who manages several liquor, liquor stores or alcohol stores in the San Francisco Bay area, and he confirmed that the notion of the mini, mini bottles is a problem because what it's, they're purchased by people who want an immediate hit, and it tends to be, they tend to be consumed. They'll buy one or two bottles and consume them nearby on the, on the premises or just off the premises, and it tends to attract people who are, who may then be up to some mischief. So, so I just wanted to confirm that the police, the police chief's recommendation against the mini bottle sale was in fact confirmed by independent sources.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Any other comments before we call for the question? If not, Edna, will we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilk?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the motion carries, and Mr. Rawlings, you'll now have spirits in that store. Okay, that brings us to item five, our director's report tonight. Are there any additional comments, Katie?
There are. So, tonight I wanted to inform you, over the past probably year and a half, we've had inquiries from 720 Hill Street. That's the Quality Inn on, like I said, 720 Hill Street, and they've asked a lot of questions about a hotel expansion. Recently, they provided us with a deposit in order to hire a team for their SEQA analysis, the environmental analysis, and they brought in a preliminary plan, which we gave them some feedback on regarding what else is necessary in order to get a complete application in. So, at this point, tomorrow, we're going to publish an RFP for an environmental analysis, and I just wanted to let you know that we're expecting an applica, a full application in the coming weeks. We, in meeting with them, the last meeting we had, we suggested a conceptual review for the design, not to get into all the specifics of, you know, circulation and traffic, but really to focus on the design and get early feedback from the Planning Commission and City Council, and they were welcome to that idea. So I think in August, at our August meeting, we'll probably have a conceptual review, and the idea there is that the Quality Inn will still have the Quality Inn look and feel and remain a Quality Inn, and they would develop the other part of the parcel that's closer to Sushi Garden as a boutique hotel. So it has a totally different look, much more modern, and so we thought it'd be good to bring that in early for Planning Commission feedback, so you can expect that. The other news that I have is Matt has been working on the ADU prototypes, and at our last meeting with the City Council, they authorized a contract for a local architect workbench, and they're also working with a, a planning group to, to bring forth in, public information on our ADU policy and update, get, get more information out to the public in an easier format to follow on ADUs, as well as to produce for prototype designs. So Matt's having the meeting, like the internal staff meeting kickoff next Monday with the contractor, and then plans to bring this to the Planning Commission for an update at the next meeting. At our last meeting, I told you I was hoping to have an IHO update to you this evening. That's the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. We've slowed that down. The, the contractor that's working on our Nexus study, which is tied to the fees, that won't really, that won't be ready till the end of summer. So I'll be bringing you an IHO update, but it, it's, it's been stalled, so I'll, that will not be at the next hearing. And, and speaking of, one last thing is sign compliance. The Planning Commission, several months back, asked us, made comments of the proliferation of signs throughout Capitola and the issues there. Tomorrow, Planner Sisanto will be visiting businesses. We've got a letter drafted with the news that on June 15th, the governor is, the roadmap to recovery and the different levels will be removed at the state level. So occupancy will return to most of the businesses, what we're anticipating. So we've drafted a letter stating, just observing what a tough year it has been, and the fact that we've been very flexible with the signs due to the tough year and having to message, get the message out to many of their clients, but we're asking that on June 15th, businesses come into compliance with our sign code, and he'll be handing individual businesses the letter, and there's a little checkbox section to, where he can note if there's a banner that should be removed. And so we're, we're taking a big leap forward tomorrow, and we're hoping by the next, by June 15th, you see a substantial change out there. And our next meeting is actually July 15th due to summer schedule, so that's all my, my updates for this evening. Thank you.
Katie, do you have a list of businesses, specific businesses that are being addressed?
You know, Sean's gonna go through our commercial areas, spend the whole day tomorrow, just addressing them individually and explaining our goal of compliance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commission communications. Any commissioner have any communications?
I had one quick one, Commissioner Newman. So, last meeting, we dealt with the issue of the Monterey Pine on Capitola Avenue, which is no longer with us, and there was a, a response after the hearing from the person who appealed, who brought up an issue. I had made a comment that I didn't think that we could impose conditions in connection with reviewing the appeal, and he took issue with that, and after thinking about it a lot, I, I agree with him. It wouldn't have changed the motion or the results in any way, but I just wanted to put that on the record, that I think he's probably correct, that we could impose conditions when we hear an appeal of a tree decision.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Newman. I think that's correct. Any other comments? I have one. Katie, it's a question for you. When we, when we discussed the wharf widening, one of the issues that I raised was the appearance of the prefab bathroom, and staff is going to look at, into it to see if there's anything other than that fiberglass box that, that appeared in the illustrations. So have we made any progress on that?
I'll, I'll check in with Public Works and bring that to our next meeting, and if there's information readily available, I can also email it out to the group.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Last chance. Okay, we'll adjourn to our July meeting. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Goodbye.
Yes. I'm on vacation. Yes, four days.